We got about seven thirty-five, so we'll start the meeting with the pledge of flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll go with the roll call.
Buckmeyer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Here.
Butler? Basil?
Here.
Obridge?
Here.
Sabatino?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Butler? Six members are present, one is not.
Okay, we've had some people wrangling this evening due to the visitation at the funeral home, so hopefully she'll be on here very shortly. Okay, we'll move on this evening. First thing on the agenda is the minutes. The first minutes that we have is the minutes that were held over from February sixteenth meeting. Is there anyone who did not get the revised copy of the February sixteenth minutes for council? Okay, does anyone do not receive their copy? All right, since everyone received their copy, does anyone have any questions? Okay, since no one has any questions, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote for the passage of the February sixteenth minutes.
Buckmeyer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Butler? Basil?
Yes.
Yeah.
Obridge?
Megan, I hear it's Tara.
Okay. Obridge?
Yes.
Sabatino?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, all members, seven, uh, seven zero have put up a vote in favor of accepting the minutes from the February sixteenth meeting. Okay, now we have the March first meeting minutes. Does anyone do not receive their copy of the March first minutes? And does anyone have any question on the March first minutes? Okay, being fact that there's no questions, we'll take a roll call vote to accept the minutes for the March first meeting.
Buckmeyer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Obridge?
Yes.
Sabatino?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, both said the minutes have been approved, seven to know. First thing on the agenda from that will be the new business, and that is appointments to the recreation board, the mayor's appointments. Mayor, do you have appointments that you wish to make?
Yes, thank you, Jim. First of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who has served on the rec board. I so appreciate their time and their talent, and tonight I would like to make two, three appointments. Jennifer Johnson and Linda Wise Gerber. I've spoken to them, and they have both agreed to re-up, to do another tour of duty with the rec department. Both of them have brought a lot of talent and enthusiasm, and I'm delighted that they have agreed to stay on. And I'd like to make a new appointment, that of Ms. Erica Basil, the wife of councilwoman Perry Basil. She's still got children in school. She brings a lot of energy, enthusiasm, and creativity, and I very much look forward to seeing her and what she will help to do on the rec board. So that is my new appointment.
Okay, what we'll do, we'll vote on these one at a time. First one, what was the first thing, Johnson?
Linda Wise Gerber.
Okay, well, Linda Wise Gerber. We'll take a roll call vote to appoint, approve her appointment to the rec board.
Buckmeyer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Basil?
Upstain.
Obridge?
Yes.
Sabatino? Smith? Smith?
Yes.
Six in favor, one abstain.
Okay, so Linda Wise Gerber has been appointed to the rec board for a second term. The next one is, is it Linda Johnson?
Jennifer.
Excuse me, Jennifer Johnson? Take a vote.
Correct.
We'll take a vote on approving her to the rec board.
Buckmeyer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Obridge?
Yes.
Sabatino?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
Okay, and we will now move on to the third mayor's appointment, Erica Basil.
Buckmeyer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Upstain.
Butler?
Yes.
Basil?
Upstain.
Obridge?
Yes.
Sabatino?
Upstain.
Smith?
Yes.
Four in favor, three abstain.
Okay, we have four appointments, four guesses, so we have Erica Basil appointed to the recreation board. Now, we have an appointment for council, right? Do we have another one that's up for reappointment, for council's appointment?
You have two, council has two. I'm not sure who's up. Is there just one seat up? I think there is. I'd like to make an appointment for that, or a recommendation.
Make a nomination?
Yeah, nomination. I'd like to nominate Lisa Amos for that position. She lives in my ward, and she's active with her kids in their school district, and she's got a lot of experience with public outreach, children's curriculums for activities and youth activities.
Okay, we have a nomination. Do we have a second for that position?
Jim, could I ask again the name? I'm sorry.
Lisa Amos. She lives directly across from the Legion.
And how many council appointments are there? Do we have clarification on that?
Council, council has two, can appoint two members to the board, but I believe only one member's available, is up for reappointment, or one vacancy.
So do we know that, or, you know what I mean, I'm just, you're like, I'm just wondering, is that a for sure? Is it one appointment up, two appointments up?
I believe it is one appointment up.
And Jim, Frank, who are we replacing?
I don't know, Frank.
Catherine, do you know?
I didn't get that, Terry.
I was asking if Catherine knew who...
Lisa's the new appointment?
She's the new appointment, yeah. But I believe there was one.
So, yeah, I guess I would, so believe, I'd like to know if there's one seat up. I'd like to know when the vacancy, when we need to make this decision.
Catherine, are you on? Can you hear this?
Steph, this is Catherine. I've got the chart in front of me. Diane Schubert and Alicia Freeman will both, are council appointees, and their appointments will both expire on four seventeen of twenty-one.
So they don't expire, just the other, just the other one's been replaced? So the other two expire. We have two replaced on the seventeenth, after the seventeenth of April, and one replacement for tonight.
Okay, and Perry, you're recommending Lisa Amos for one of the vacancies that is going to come up on four seventeen. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. And this?
Um, this is Linda. I have a question. Why are we changing what's, what's working well? Just out of curiosity, why are we changing what works well at this time?
Uh, I, actually, I just, I ended up knowing this person over the last couple of years.
I'm asking why.
Absolutely.
But I'm asking why we're changing, why we're, why we're changing at this time?
I think.
I guess because the points are being, that terms are running out, and as the new mayor, I have the ability to make my own appointments, and I think council will have the ability to make their appointments when the terms end on four seventeen, is why I would say.
Okay. Linda, do you have a recommendation? Well, no, I, the, the two that, the two that they're getting rid of are, are really, really good. They work well. They're very active. They contribute a lot. I, I just don't understand. It's kind of goofy. But, well, okay, if, we have to, we have to. I'm just, I stated my case, and that's...
Okay, Linda, which, which two do you feel are being replaced?
Uh, both, Lee, uh, both Alicia and Diane are very, very good, and very faithful. They're very devoted. They help out a lot. I just, I just don't understand why you would want to get rid of them at this time. But, but I'd like... Well, it sounds like we have two. Catherine's there, that's her, that's her choice, so, you know, I'm just saying that we're, we're getting rid of two good people.
It's not getting rid of anybody else.
It sounds like...
Wait a minute, Mayor, may I ask a question? You had three appointments, is that correct? Plus the service director makes board?
That is correct, and Mr. Bodaboo was my first appointment, and I'd like to reappoint Cinda and Jennifer, and then I made a new appointment of Erica. The other two appointments would be council appointments.
Yeah, I, yeah, out of the two council appointments, I'm just making one. I'm not, you know, and I think Lisa would be a two in addition.
Yeah, I'm wondering who Linda would recommend. This is Steph. I'm wondering who Linda would recommend, if council has two appointments. I'm saying keep the two on that. She's kicking off.
Linda, I'm not kicking them off. These are your council appointments.
Yeah, these are, these are ours.
Right, I thought you said that they were being replaced. Okay, those are the two I would recommend then. They are two very good assets to that board.
Okay, so we've got two recommendations for previous two positions, and Perry has a third for Lisa Amos. I guess we would have to take a vote on all three people to see who gets the majority. So the three people would be...
Well, when there's, let me ask you, procedure wise, if there's, if there's going to be a vacancy for reappointments, don't you have to reappoint them anyway, and they need to be, their name need to be brought up as a potential?
Well, no, I think they're, I think they're, I think their term expires at a certain date, and they have to be reappointed.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So these two people will be on the rec board until the seventeenth, and then they will be reappointed on the seventeenth.
That's what I'm, exactly. So I'm just asking for one. As city councilman, I'm making the recommendation that we appoint Lisa Amos. The other person, you know, Linda or anybody else can make a, make a suggestion. I don't...
Would, I'm going to enter a legal opinion here. Would, would we be wise to just wait until the seventeenth to make these other appointments?
Well, actually, your next meeting is April fifth, and then you have one April nineteenth. So I would suggest that you make the appointments on the April fifth meeting.
Okay, so we'd have to nominate the two, the three?
Yes.
A nomination?
Have the nominations and then the vote.
Okay, okay. All right, so at this point in time, we have one nomination on the floor, which is Lisa Amos. We'll have to vote on all, any appointments of the two positions that will be replaced.
I'd like to, I'd like to see a vote on Lisa today, and then the third, the second one, I don't care whenever, before the expiration.
Okay, we have, we have a nomination for Lisa Amos. Do we have a second on that?
Jim, this is Tara. I'll second it.
Okay, we have a second, and we had a nomination of Lisa Amos and a second by Terry Butler.
Can I ask, can I ask, this is Mark. Can I ask a question?
Sure, Mark, go ahead.
The, the two ladies who are on the board right now, that Mrs. Jordan recommended, have they been asked if they want that position again, or are we just deciding we don't want them in there, we want another person in there? Because if they were good enough to serve without their terms, I think they should be given the opportunity to say, yes, I want to do it again, or no, I don't wish to do it again. So I'm a, I'm a decline and think we should get that information before we vote on April sixth.
You know, I, I, I suppose maybe that would be wise.
I mean, I suppose you could, but, I mean, the point is that their term ends, and it's council who's allowed to make another appointment. That's, I'm just throwing it out there. I think she'd be really good, you know?
Okay, we have a nomination and a second. We have to take a vote on Lisa Amos, the...
I would, I would actually advise council to wait to the fifth, since there are only two seats that will be vacant, and three possible nominations, and do it all in, at one time, yes.
Okay, so I have to ask Perry, you will withdraw your nomination?
Yes, I will withdraw that.
Okay. All right, so we'll take no further action on the rec, rec center appointments for the council selections. Okay, we'll move on. Mayor, do you have any other reports this evening?
Yes, Jim, I do. Thank you. We've had another busy two weeks. Met with council member Basil regarding a couple of his ward issues. Had an OML Zoom meeting regarding COVID monies that may come down and restrictions, and I'll get into that in a second. Did a drive-by down to Stewart's when we had heavy rain. We met with Jeff Vaughn regarding some pump station issues and the wastewater plant, and I also met with Darren to discuss preemptive issues and measures for when we start getting heavy rains. Helped Greg Clark, Officer Clark. He was doing a food drive. We actually took food down to people who are in need, went to Contagiana. We also took some food to the rec center and let people who may be in need know that there were bags of potatoes, apples, milk, cheese, all sorts of staples there, and we were very successful in getting that disseminated quickly. We're looking to do a periodic food handout in conjunction with the council churches, and again, we were talking about using the rec center for the distribution. Met with the law director regarding several issues coming before the city. We continue to meet with the net and finance regarding the three revolving loans that were discovered in reconciling the book. Participated in a police committee meeting. A lot of exciting things going on there. I'm sure Beth will address. I'd like to say welcome to our new officer, who will be starting within the next couple of weeks. Again, thank you to Donnie and Darren and the street team for getting to hole patching quickly. They've done a good transition from shoveling snow to starting to patch holes. Again, winter's been tough on our streets, but they're making steady progress. Please let Jeremy know of any particularly bad spots, and we'll get those to Dawn and Darren. Met with Chief Urbans regarding the excellent drug bus our department has been conducting. They are just doing a fabulous job. This from the High Dynasty Zoom League meeting last week. Much of the detail regarding the disbursement and guidance on how local governments can spend funding will be determined by the U.S. Treasury Department, but here's how the bill outlines the way funds will be distributed by local governments. I was taking notes. For non-entitled cities, which would be a city under a population of fifty thousand, the funds are passed through the state, and the state will have thirty days to get the first block of money, fifty percent of it to these cities. States may apply for extensions under certain circumstances. The final fifty percent will be available twelve months later and must be sent by December of 2024. The U.S. Treasury is in the process of developing the detailed guidelines for use of the funds and the mechanism for having funds will get to our non-entitled cities. The league will share those, and I will share those from the league as soon as those are released. I attended an East Ohio Regional Hospital board meeting on Wednesday, March tenth. They are happy to report that their departments are all opening and running smoothly. They hit a little bit of a shaky start. They had a just great deal of people hitting the ER the first couple of days, and they were still on their shakedown cruise. But they said things are getting much smoother, and they're looking at about a hundred people a day in a very short wait. They also still need nurses, so if you know of anyone who's a nurse who's looking for employment, please ask them to contact East Ohio Regional Hospital. They invite everyone to come see their new facility. They will be having a grand opening over Memorial Day weekend. And again, met with the chief outstanding, regarding the outstanding drug bus. Our guys have done. I also went down and walked the bike path, checking for branches and sticks. Our guys sat down there and cleaned it off. It looks like full speed ahead on walking and exercising, and I happily accept the invitation to read the day of prayer service scheduled in April. And I'll be speaking to two rotaries here in the next couple of weeks. That's about it. Thank you, Jim.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Mike, do you have any questions for the mayor on her report?
No, sir.
Okay, Linda, do you have any questions for the mayor on her report?
No.
Okay, Tara, do you have any questions for the mayor on her report?
No, thank you, Catherine.
Perry had to step out of the room for a minute. Beth, do you have any questions for the mayor on her report?
No questions, thanks, Mayor.
Frank, do you have any questions for the mayor on her report?
Yeah, I just have one question. How's mayor's court coming along, a report?
Well, the last, the first time we had mayor's court, there were no people to treat, but I think we'll have a couple of people here in the next couple of weeks.
All right, thank you.
Okay, Mike, do you have any questions for the mayor on her report?
I have this question.
Okay, Perry, do you have any questions for the mayor on her report?
No.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the service director, Jeremy Greenwood. Jeremy, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, sir. Good evening, council. Wanted to kind of hit on some items that we've been going and working on and going through. First thing on there was council items. I did get a list of some streets from the second ward that needed some attention. We've got those added to our list and going through it. We're getting new lists every day from people calling and reporting things. Meeting, had a meeting with the law director on some various projects and things coming up. We had a police committee meeting last week. Also met with a lawyer for citizens utility task, and then met with Vaughn, Justin Vaughn on some wastewater plant issues that we have to address. Upcoming project, started to look at a spring cleanup, which is being scheduled, so more details on that will come out when we have some more dates. GIS receiver was ordered. We also got the computer for our leak detection equipment. Community garden, we've met, I met with the rec center to look at layout. We're working with the rec center and the Masford Gardeners on that. Building projects that are still, still kind of kicking around, renting the, the building on South Sugar to the Bama County Pool and Water. They're looking at finances to see if it makes sense to them. We still have the fire department building to get to Cumberland Trail. The city restroom building, we kind of hit on that in the finance committee. We're waiting on the Tuxlet restroom fixtures to come in, and then with that, we've also got the rec center restroom update, or upgrade, and then we're also working on the train station renovation, trying to get that going through. Wastewater plant, we had a blower fan that needed to be replaced. We're updating, looking at updating our treatment procedures. We only have to treat six months out of the year, but we've had some fluorine and E. coli issues, so we're trying to go through that and figure that out, so that we don't get the, get the NACI Gram from the EPA. Before council tonight is legislation to hire a wastewater superintendent. Some of the information on that is when we had the blower fan break. Basically, the fan itself broke from lack of maintenance. It was not being maintained and was not being greased. It's no one's real fault on that. It's just one of those things, but it's going to cost us about forty-nine thousand dollars to replace it. So I've been wanting to, to look at getting a superintendent down there for a while. I sent out an email to the utility committee back in early January, and then to rest the council a week later outlining what I'd like to do with that. We can kind of get into that a little bit later. Updating the administrative policies and procedures, we're still working on that. Decent water connection, we're just waiting on funding approval. The water distribution system, we submitted for the Ohio EPA, the water supply revolving loan account, to get that application in, so we had that. So good news, our health insurance, from last time, our, from last year, we only had an increase of around one point nine percent. We were kind of budgeting a little bit more, so that's some good news. We also received with our, our COVID funds, we got a, another, two aeroplaid machines that came in, and we donated one of those machines to St. Clair'sville schools for their use and ability to try and clean and disinfect their, their schools and classrooms and things. Got some dam repairs that we're going to be working on coming through, different departments. Our electric department's still doing the same stuff, you know, utility upgrades, equipment maintenance, service work, we're trimming some trees. Water and wastewater, we're looking at water line breaks and getting some sewers. Knock on wood, we haven't had a, a very big break lately. It's been a little, a couple little ones here and there. Street department, as the mayor mentioned, they're cleaning catch basins. They were cleaning the bike trail. They're repairing street and alleys. The dura-patcher, we're trying to use it, and then getting some cold patch. We hit a kind of a snag with the dura-patcher. We were buying the emulsion from the state, as well, the township was doing the same thing. The state has cut us off, for lack of a better term. We're still trying to find another supplier for that, and we're looking at Austin with that. They're also doing some equipment repairs. The police department, they're working on their programs, the youth program and the elderly program, like before, and looking at some training auctions. Good of the city, we've got one employee out with COVID exposure right now, and then want to say congratulations to our newest patrol officer who was hired the other day for the police department, and... And we had several more drug busts with us, so those guys are just going like crazy on this. And then a couple legislation items before council tonight, you know, the third reading for the J.B. Greenstein thing, the wastewater superintendent and then, and then the U.A.N. feature for the finance director. So that's about everything you've got.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Mike, do you have any questions for the Service Safety Director?
No, sir.
Okay, Linda, do you have any questions for the Service Safety Director?
No, I think we probably should wait till we start to talk about the wastewater position later.
Okay. Tara, do you have any questions for the Service Director?
No questions, thanks, Jeremy.
Perry, do you, I'm sorry, Perry, do you have any questions for the Safety Service Director?
I do. Hey, Jeremy, why were we cut off from purchasing from the state for materials for dura-patch machine?
They basically just said that there was an agreement that was set up between us or the township to purchase it. We were just purchasing it. I think what it was, to be honest with you, is that somebody in Columbus went, well, why are they purchasing stuff? They need to have a, an agreement. So I've been working with the local ODOT guys to try and get a contact up in Columbus so that we can get one. Our other options are, you know, talking with the township. They have located a potential tank, a used tank that might be used for this material. The problem with, with us or them doing the tanks themselves is the tank has to have heat to it or electric to it to adhesive up and keep the emulsion warm. They have to have electric agitators in the tank. And then the tank itself has to be set with a dike around it so that containment dike, if the tank would ever rupture, it would hold the emulsion in a confined area. So there's some back and forth with that. We're just trying to see what our options are and kind of go from there.
All right, thank you. Okay, Beth, do you have any questions for the Service Safety Director?
Yes, I have three, Jeremy. I don't know if you or Matt, the new officer of the, could you hear this his name and where he's from, yours experience?
I was gonna let Matt handle that.
Okay, that's fair. My second, third question is, we're on the line off of Woodrow, that very bad area. Are, is there any plans and what are they to redo that section?
Yes, it's one of the lists we need to sit down, I need to sit down with the street superintendent and finalize our list. We're getting pieces and patches. I know that is a absolute really bad spot, so it's been on the list for over a year now. And so the plan is to actually probably come in, grind it out and then put another topping back on it. But to be honest, it's just still kind of premature. We're still trying to figure out our whole entire list. But that's, that's on the list because it's heavily traveled.
All right, and I reported this last fall down in the Councilman Smith's neighborhood, down in Nita Woods, Tony and John Lane, there's a very bad soft area. All right, have you seen it that I submitted and what are the plans and when?
That one, to be honest, I have not seen. I will talk with the street superintendent, see where that's at and I'll respond back to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Beth, did you have any questions for Jeremy?
Is that Beth?
Yes.
I do not have questions, thank you, Jeremy.
You're welcome.
Mike, do you have any questions for Jeremy?
Uh, no questions, Jim.
Okay, we'll move on to the Police Chief, Chief Arbins. Matt, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Council. Catching you up for February's numbers, we had a total of three hundred and eleven calls, sixteen criminal arrests and ninety traffic stops. We just today received our final clearance from the FAA on our drone program. So that is in full swing now. We're good to operate anywhere in Belmont County with that, with that drone. So I know members on the police committee were asking as soon as that was up, maybe we could schedule a demonstration for them. And I'll have the pilot, Officer Klotz, get prepared for that. So we'll invite everyone to that once, once he's ready for you. Our enrollment with the ATF on their eTrace program was complete a couple of days ago and we've sent our first submissions through that program for analysis. As Jeremy mentioned, over the last couple of weeks, we've had, I think, about four more very good drug trafficking arrests. And they're working on a couple others as we speak, investigations. The dark range simulator was delivered today. It was a busy day today, I didn't even have a chance to unbox it. But again, I know everyone was looking forward to seeing how that works. And as soon as we get it set up and feel confident enough to show you, we will schedule a date to show you that as well. The biggest news, of course, is the hiring of a full-time officer. His name is Justin Work. He lives in Bridgeport. He brings with him eight, about eight years' experience in law enforcement. He was formerly with the Belmont County Sheriff's Office. Was a member on the Belmont County SWAT team, crisis intervention team. And he brings with him many good certifications and had great recommendations. And he should be an extremely nice fit for our police department. So if I see anybody around, he's going to be on night turns. But if I can get him up here during the day, anybody that sees him, please feel free to introduce yourselves. Being on night turn, he probably won't get a chance to see everybody right away. But if you happen to see him out, you'll know the new guy. He won't know who you are, so introduce yourself and I'll, I'll make sure he's aware that he might be getting a lot of introductions here. And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Nice to have as many hands working for you on the department as possible and we've got some good ones. Okay, Mike, do you have any questions on Matt's first report?
No, sir, I do not.
Linda, do you have any questions for Chief Arbins?
No.
Tara?
Yes, I do. Matt, what did you say his name is?
His name is Justin Work.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Tara, do you have any questions for Matt?
No questions, thanks, Matt.
You're welcome, thank you.
Perry, do you have any questions for Matt?
I don't, thanks, Matt.
Yes, sir.
Beth, do you have any questions for Matt?
No, I will enhance on some of these items in the police committee report, but just thank you, Matt, appreciate everything you do.
Yes, ma'am.
Frank, do you have any questions for Matt on his report?
Yes, Matt, when we signed the contract with the FOP, we were told, you know, finances were kind of tight on police, okay? What's, what would be the salary of Justin?
His base rate starts out at just over twenty-four per hour.
Twenty-four, twenty-four dollars, that is?
Correct.
Okay, how about benefits?
Same benefits that all the other officers get, medical, the eye care program that Asme gets and the Delta Dental.
Okay, so obviously, between then and now, you know, you've gotten the okay to, budget wise, that's in the budget, that we have enough to, you know, hire another officer then?
Yes, sir, it was budgeted into the 2021 police budget that was passed.
Matt, this is Beth, if I may, also just remind the council that this was, I'm going to respond. I'm going to respond to one of Frank's questions, too. Yeah, so this new hire was promised, no, I want to respond right now to this one.
Okay.
I want to say that this new hire, this new hire was promised to the police department when we let the dispatchers go. The budget was passed, there's money in the budget. So that's why the new hire and it's about time that we did it.
Okay, Mike, do you have any questions for the Chiefs?
No, I do not. Excuse me. I'd just like to say I'm looking forward to the demonstrations of our new technology. I can't wait to see it.
Okay, again, thank you, Matt. Again, we appreciate the job that the department does and we are very fortunate. Okay, we'll move on to the Finance Director, you're welcome, Matt. Move on to the Finance Director's report, Annette Williams.
Good evening, everyone. I am there the February month end reports with the council committee, the finance committee, and those will be management reports that they will get every month. So if anyone has any requests for any other reports that are not on the committee, they can send me an email and I'll respond to them, send those to you electronically. The other thing I had was, I was a little late getting this out. It was, it's in a resolution and in a nutshell, it's just authorizing me to opt in to a U.A.N. feature that will directly email a communication to the mayor, members of council in the event that fiscal officer does not post a bank rec affiliation in U.A.N. in approximately sixty days. So this is just a safety feature. That's all it is to where if I do not post the bank rec in a timely manner, then the mayor, members of council will get a, get an email stating that. So it's just a checks and balance thing. But I think will benefit the city.
And as soon as this is passed, this checks and balance goes into effect right away then?
I assume, I have to put it into the system, but I don't, since it's already set out, it shouldn't take any amount of time to do that.
Did you say this was recommended by the state auditor?
Yes, strongly recommended.
Okay, thank you. Mark, do you have any questions for the Finance Director?
No, sir, I do not.
Linda, do you have any questions for the Finance Director?
No.
Tara, do you have any questions for the Finance Director?
No, thank you.
Perry, do you have any questions for the Finance Director?
Oh, I don't, thank you.
Beth, do you have any questions for the Finance Director?
No, thank you, Annette.
Frank, do you have any questions for the Finance Director?
I have none.
Okay, thank you, Frank. Mike, do you have any questions or do you want to wait for your report?
If you have any questions, I'll wait.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to Planning and Zoning Administrator, Mr. Murphy. Tom, do you have a report this evening?
Ah, yes, thank you, Jim. Again, the variance hearing for the CFM Express at one eighty-eight East Main Street will take place on Wednesday, March twenty-fourth at six P.M. Rec Center, a new addition is proposed. Feel free to come to the meeting, any council members can, or any members of the public, or contact me regarding the review of the plans of the glass over with any council members will pay for. I met with J.P. Phillips of the Campbell Oil Company. The demolition permit for the car wash in the old home at Bell Store location on South Mary Street was issued, so the work on that demolition will take place hopefully in the near future. The long-term project is still that, just that, a long-term project, but it will come to fruition. The utility bill did have the construction permit reminder, so I've been getting quite a few calls regarding our code and permits and applications. There is a new bit, or a business, it's called Lux Boutique, the women's clothing and accessory shop that is currently located outside municipal limits, at East St. Clairsville, moving to fifty-seven East Main Street. This is the fourth location of the Holly's Dress Boutique. In my conversations with the owner, they wanted to move the business into the downtown district and they were very glad to have found the location. I also met with Chad and Audrey Brailer. They are the owners of one sixty-six East Main Street where they're establishing a gelato and a sandwich shop at the corner of East Main and Sugar. They will be for the Board of Architecture review, the April fifth meeting with a preliminary proposal. So that's all I have for council this evening.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Mark, do you have any questions for Tom on his report?
No, sir.
Linda, do you have any questions for Tom on his report?
No.
Okay, Tara, do you have any questions for Tom on his report?
No questions, thank you.
Perry, do you have any questions for Tom on his report? Oh, no, thank you. Beth, do you have any questions for Tom on his report?
I have none.
No.
Beth, you said you had none?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. And Mike, do you have any questions for Tom on his report?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Okay, we'll move on to the Council Committee Reports. First one is Finance, Mr. Smith. Mike, do you have a report this evening?
Yes, Finance Committee met tonight. We discussed, as Jeremy had already stated, the insurance increased about 1.9%, which is as much as an increase as I think Jeremy had anticipated, it's just kind of a win. It's, as far as the audit, Annette's getting some preliminary information ready for the auditors to, they're not scheduled to come in yet, but when they do, but they're actually things ready, ready to go. And as far as tonight's, I don't know if we have an ordinance in front of us regarding, Annette had mentioned that the state is now requiring, for good reason, anybody's in an esthetic for any town or village or city to reconcile bank accounts in a timely manner. Believe it or not, and I'm sure everybody has seen local, local towns around here got in trouble for, I guess, with the financing, so the one reason is they just simply don't reconcile a bank account. So I'd like to get this passed tonight. And that's doing it anyways, but you know, the bank recs aren't timely, like she said, everybody will get an email and, you know, be alerted to it, so I think that's a good thing. And that's all I have.
Okay, Mike, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mike? Okay, no questions for Mike. We'll move on to Utilities. Tara, do you have anything to report this evening?
No, I have no report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any questions for Tara? Okay, we'll move on to Police. Beth, do you have a report this evening?
I do. We had a police committee meeting on March eighth. Mike and Perry are the committee members. They attended, so did Jeremy and Jim and Catherine. And of course, Chief Arbins was there. We talked about the budget had been passed, talked about the new hire that he's already, Chief Arbins has already introduced with Justin Work. As I said earlier, that was a position that was promised to the department since we let the dispatchers go. We also are looking at a new cruiser. Chief Arbins talked about the simulator as well as the as well as the drone, and we will be scheduling the time where we can have an opportunity to see what each of these, the drone and the simulator do. So we'll keep you guys informed as to when we're going to have that kind of preview. And I think the other thing that we talked about was, Matt's been instrumental in getting a juvenile program started. We're working with this organization called Strategies for Youth, in partnering with people locally in order to help support that through funding. And we've got a commitment already from the Belmont County Juvenile Court, so our gratitude towards Judge Davies and Jennifer Shunk from Belmont County Juvenile Court. But we also have a couple other people that we help to partner with and pilot this for the first year in St. Clairsville schools, starting the next academic year. Another congratulations to Officer Clark, who was the employee of the month, and recognition to Officer De Paga for his certification to SWAT team, and Officer Yates, who was instrumental in saving someone's life. So, Matt, feel free to add something if I've missed it, but I believe that that's the report for the Police Committee.
Yep, you covered it all. Thank you.
Yeah, so I'd be remiss in again not acknowledging the leadership provided by Chief R. Benz.
Thank you, Beth, and again, thank you, Matt. Does anyone have any questions for Beth on the Police Report?
Yes, Jim, this is Frank. Beth, I have a question. Got to mention cruisers. How many do we have at present time?
Matt, maybe you'll help me with that?
Yeah, we currently have five, the oldest of which is the Crown Vic, which no longer has a county radio or a city radio in it. That's the one that will be getting replaced. I think it's about 130,000 miles.
Okay, so Matt, so technically, we have five, and with the new one coming, for a short time, we'll have six cruisers, right? Is that correct?
Yeah, right. The Crown Vic will be the one getting replaced. We'll still have five. One of those is a dedicated K-9 vehicle that doesn't get used by anybody, so four for the full cadre of officers to use.
All right, thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions for Beth on the Police Report?
Jim, this is Mayor Catherine. I, not a question, but I ran into Judge Davies today, and he is so excited and happy to be a part of the juvenile jeopardy program that's going to be instituted, and he really looks forward to getting into the schools, and he could not say enough good things about our police department. I was, I was very proud of you guys, as I always am, but he's really excited to be a part of this. But Beth, thank you for that reach out. That was wonderful.
Absolutely.
Okay, no further questions on the Police Committee. We'll move on to Streets on the North Side. Perry, do you have anything to report on the North Side Streets?
Oh, nothing, nothing, anything major, just...
You know what, Jim?
Good, Beth.
Jim, I apologize, but there is one, I just, I just want council to, no, the next Police Committee meeting, right?
Okay, sure.
The second Monday in the month. I should have, I should have said that, so. And I don't actually have a calendar in front of me, so it's, that's, actually, I have it written right here. So the next Police Committee meeting will be on April 12th. It'll be teleconference, as was the last one. So I apologize for forgetting that.
Okay, those meetings are going to be on a regular basis on the second Monday of the month. Okay, Perry said you had nothing on the North Side?
Oh, just going through the streets, and sending a list over to you. And there's also some other issues. I'm sitting with Jeremy, talking about some other sewer issues in the area, so I'll let you guys know if anything pertinent happens.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions for Perry on the North Side? Okay, Frank, on the South Side, anything other than the two that you mentioned previously?
No, I have nothing to add to those two.
Okay, thank you. Anything on the Safety Department?
I have none.
Okay, we'll move on to Building and Grounds. Mr. Basil, Perry?
Well, as far, as far as buildings and grounds, we're still looking at and negotiating with Belmont County still on water, and that's coming along very nicely, and it's going to be a pleasure to have them here working in the city and taking responsibility for those buildings as we come to finalizing an agreement with them. And I know there's going to be doing, we're going to be doing some roof repairs over at the, over at our main building for the electric and grounds. Other than that, there's nothing really pertinent at the moment.
Okay. Okay, we'll move on to Planning Commission. Mr. Sabatino. Frank, do you have anything on Planning Commission?
No, I don't have nothing to add to what Tom has already said.
Okay, thank you. Move on to the Fire District. Frank, you have a report on the Fire District?
One item. Next scheduled meeting will be Thursday, March 25th, 3 o'clock at the EFC Center. That's all.
Would you say the time was, Frank?
Pardon, Jim?
Would you say the time was?
3 o'clock.
3 o'clock. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, and we'll move on, this time, to the Recreation Department. Linda, before you get started on that, the first thing I'm going to request, as you do, is to contact the two current members on the Rec Board that will be up for replacement or reappointment, and find out their interests, if they are both interested in staying on, because we possibly could have at least three people that could be nominated. So, find out their intentions.
Yes.
Okay, I don't know, do you have anything else?
I've already spoken to one.
Right.
Uh, no, nothing else on the Rec Center, but I do have, for the Park Board, which is, the park is officially open as of today, although it has been open for the last couple weeks because of the nice weather. Also, the Rotary Shelter, now that's not the Rotary Pavilion, not the big one, but the Rotary Shelter, there has been a decrease in the rental for it. So, you know, now's a good time for people to call and rent those. Also, the Disc Golf Court is now complete. There are 18 baskets, and it also has teams for beginners, intermediate, and advanced players. And that is all for the park.
Okay, thank you, Linda. It's nice to see the weather where we can start thinking about opening the park. Okay, does anyone have any questions for Linda on the Recreation Center or the Park Board?
I do. I got a question about the Disc Golf. I know where I came from and moved from, it was a really, really big growing sport, and it's becoming international. How prevalent is it here in the valley? I mean, do we see a lot of activity in teams?
Um, the last time I spoke with Katie about it, she said more and more people were starting to use it.
Okay. I think they were just, I think the 18 just completed last year, wasn't it?
Uh, yes, I think, just recently.
Yeah, I think they went from nine to 18 last year. Okay, anybody else have any other questions for Linda on the Recreation Department or the Park District? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Ordinances Resolutions. Law Director Elizabeth Glick.
Okay, council has three pieces of legislation before tonight. Up for third reading is Resolution 21, or 2021-4. That's a resolution approving the solid waste management plan of the Jefferson Belmont Regional Solid Waste Authority and declaring an emergency. Up for first reading tonight is Ordnance 2021-5. That's an ordinance abolishing the positions of Superintendent of Water, Wastewater Plant Operations, and Superintendent of Water, Wastewater Distribution and Collection, and creating the position of Superintendent of Wastewater for the City of St. Clairsville, and declaring an emergency. Service Director has asked that this be emergency legislation so that he can proceed with posting this job, in trying to get somebody into that position. The other piece of legislation that is up for first reading is Resolution Number 2021-6. It's a resolution authorizing the fiscal officer to opt into a UAN feature as recommended by the Auditor of State of Ohio, declaring an emergency. And this is what the Finance Director and Mike Smith, the Finance Committee, was talking about, is a feature that would allow reporting should the accounts not be reconciled within 60 days.
Okay, that's our three pieces of legislation. We'll go with the third reading on Resolution 2021-4.
Resolution 2021-4, a resolution approving the solid waste management plan of the Jefferson Belmont Regional Solid Waste Authority and declaring an emergency.
Okay, this is the third reading on Resolution 2021-4. Will someone wish to make a motion to pass this resolution?
I'll make a motion.
This is Linda.
Okay, I think we've got Perry first as motion, and Beth, I believe it was, second.
Actually, it was Linda, but that's okay.
Okay, it's Linda then. Okay, because everybody got in there once, so it's Perry and Linda.
That's okay. It doesn't matter as long as it goes.
Okay, we'll now take a roll call vote on passing this piece of legislation.
Look, Mayor?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Obridge?
Yes.
Sabatino?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Our members are in favor.
Okay, we have nothing up for a second reading. This motion is passed on 2021-4, until we'll move on to the first reading of 2021-5.
Ordnance 2021-5, an ordinance abolishing the position of the Superintendent of Water, Wastewater Plant Operations, and the Superintendent of Water, Wastewater Distribution and Collections, and creating the position of Superintendent of the Wastewater for the City of St. Clairsville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that's the first reading. There's a question about whether this should be passed as an emergency. We can take some discussion on this before we decide. Jeremy, do you have anything you wish to speak on in reference to this piece of legislation?
No, it's kind of like Elizabeth said, it was something that I'd been working on since January, but the actions and the things that have popped up in the last couple weeks have kind of pushed it to the forefront. As I mentioned in my report, we had a blower fan that had broken down at the plant, and as we're looking at repairing it, it became obvious that it was kind of a, more of a lack of a maintenance item. And I really, really think that we need to get somebody down there. This is nothing against Donnie or anybody else that we have going through it. It's just one of those things. We need a superintendent down there all the time. And from my previous, my email that I referenced back in January, our outside consultant right now is charging us over 100,000 a year to be there four hours a day, to write the EPA reports, and to just be on site, and that's what the state's requirement is. If we were to hire somebody, even if they had full-time family benefits, we would be saving approximately 10,000 to 15,000 dollars a year, and have somebody there full-time and being able to direct the guy, you know, and make sure that, you know, we don't have items like this that pop up.
Okay, thank you.
So Jeremy, the person that's down there now that we subcontract out, he doesn't have the responsibility of looking over our system and making sure things are greased and the daily, monthly, and bimonthly duties are taken care of, right?
No, all his charge is, is to be the operator of records and report back to the EPA. He's not actually technically allowed to direct our staff to do anything. It's just one of those, those back and forth things. He's kind of there to make us compliant, and that's really it. It's just one of those things that kind of slips through the cracks, and, you know, the replacement of that, like I said, it's going to be 49,000 dollars, and it's a, an issue that we can't allow to keep happening, for lack of a better term.
Okay.
Yeah, Jim?
Yes, Frank.
This is Frank. I've got a question for Jeremy. Jeremy, why are we splitting the water wastewater position?
What's there, oh, is the water wastewater? We don't need a superintendent for water anymore. Basically, we have an operator of records. Once we switch within the year to the county water, we are not going to be manufacturing water, so we will not have to have a water-free certification for our operator of records. We'll be down to a distribution. So, there's not really a necessity to have a superintendent in that department. Just kind of a back and forth with it. You know, with the, with us not manufacturing our own water, basically, there's not going to be as much to do for the guys, so we're looking at ways to transition them in either into other departments or other roles. One of the roles that we talked about was with the water distribution system. That's going to be a very long-term upgrade and replacement project, so I'm kind of looking for them to be, the boots on the ground, has their contractors are out doing this work. I want them out there looking, observing, making sure they're doing it right, and then also identifying anything that pops up. There are a lot of gas lines and unmarked sewer lines and things, and abandoned lines in town, so I want somebody there from the city to be able to identify these things and make sure that these things are getting documented.
All right, and I got two more for you, Jeremy. The operator of records, you mentioned, okay, who is that person?
It's Jeff Model. He's our Class 3. He has a water-free certificate, and then, as we mentioned in the last meeting, Ryan Denham just also got his water-free certificate too, so we actually have three, or two, water-free, sorry.
All right, and this new position, what's a license required?
It would be a Class 2 operation is what we have for the sanitary.
Okay, we don't have no one presently qualifies for that?
No. We had, we had some individuals before, but they left the city, and that's why, I'm assuming why we ended up with a outside consultant being our operator for the wastewater department.
And my final question, how many employees in wastewater?
Uh, there are currently four. We have two that were there, and then actually two that were just hired. They are coming up on their six-month review, actually, next week.
Okay, and then you said there's, we're not going to hire no water superintendent? We're just going to keep the operator?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all, thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Daniels.
Yeah, Frank, or Mark?
Mr. Greenwood, and I know you explained it before to me, but from the benefit of everybody on council, this ordinance 2021-5 has to be passed in order for you to be able to advertise this job. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. What is in there now is a water wastewater slash superintendent in distribution, so we have to create this position for me to even advertise, to go out, and then, as I mentioned before... so we have to create this position for me to even advertise, to go out, and then, as I, I mentioned before, with the issue with some of our maintenance, uh, and the upkeep of things, it's very important that we kind of keep track of what's going on so that, um, we do not have any more of these, uh, you know, fifty thousand dollar surprises. And in order to do this, we're gonna, uh, we're, we're gonna have to go through, create the position, and by creating the position, uh, a- it's also asking council for permission to advertise it. Uh, to advertise it, we're gonna have to take two or three weeks to advertise, uh, probably two weeks to get the resumes in and review them and go through it, another couple of weeks to set up, uh, interviews with the applicants, and then the decision-making. So, we're potentially a month or two out for e- even trying to make this decision, which is why I was kind of going, oh, this is, this is not good, we need to, we need to ask this for emergency.
And I, I have no problem with the, with getting that advertisement out. And if we do pass this, that does not mean that that position will be filled immediately. We would still have to vote on that individual, and we would still have to negotiate and approve of his compensation package, is that correct? That would, that would be a whole different ordinance?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
No problem.
Uh, this is Linda, I do have a question, um, so just to be clear, we're eliminating the water super and creating the wastewater, correct? Or no?
Years ago, what they did is they actually combined the water and wastewater superintendent, so we're breaking out the wastewater superintendent to be a standalone position, so it's not combined with the water.
Okay. All right, and, um, also, who is currently responsible for overseeing the equipment? I mean, is there somebody at that water plant that's supposed to make sure everything's in proper order, or no?
Well, and that's, that's part of the issue, there's not a superintendent, are you talking about the water or the wastewater?
I'm talking about the wastewater.
Okay, wastewater, there is no one down there because we have, our operator of record is an outside consultant. So, they do not have any obligation for us to, for, for, to tell us or to, and they can't direct our staff to do anything, so it's just kind of a...
Okay, you're saying that nobody actually works there, nobody actually works at the wastewater, correct? Is that what you said?
No, the, the, no, the guys are working there, they just don't have a direction for some of the things. There's plenty of stuff that they're doing, they're out on water line breaks, the, uh, we have a lab guy that's down there doing our tests in our labs and everything else, we just need a, a leader, basically, to, somebody that can direct them and say, here's our list of things that we need to upgrade and maintain, here's the stuff that we need to watch and go through, which is what all the superintendents do. And create...
Okay, were you getting like, uh, a weekly maintenance report or anything? Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I don't think we have any more questions, we've already had first reading on Resolution 2021-5. Does anyone wish to make a motion to consider this passage of emergency legislation?
I could do it, Jim. I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second for that motion?
This is Beth, I'll make that second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We will take a vote to decide whether or not this will be considered emergency legislation.
Bookmeyer?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Sabatino?
No.
Yes.
Five in favor, two nays.
Okay, we have five in favor, two, uh, negatives, uh, so we do have enough to consider this emergency legislation, so go for the final reading and then take a roll call vote on passage.
Ordinance 2021-5, an ordinance abolishing the position of superintendent of water wastewater plant operations and a superintendent of water wastewater distribution and collections, and creating the position of a superintendent of wastewater for the city of St. Clairsville, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, we'll now take a vote on passage of the legislation.
Bookmeyer?
Yes.
Jordan?
No.
Butler?
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Yes.
Sabatino?
No.
Smith?
Yes.
Five in favor, two opposed.
Okay, we have five in favor, the, uh, Resolution 2021, I'm sorry, uh, Ordinance 2021-5 has been passed, five to two. Okay, we'll move on to Resolution Number 2021-6.
Resolution Number 2021-6, a resolution authorizing the fiscal officer to opt into a UAN feature as recommended by the auditor of the state of Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Okay, uh, does anyone wish to, uh, consider this an emergency legislation, uh...
This is Linda, I mean that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declare an emergency.
Okay, we have a motion to declare, to consider this emergency, do we have a second? Yeah, I'll second it.
This is Beth, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a seconds, we'll now take a vote to decide whether or not this is emergency legislation.
Bookmeyer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Sabatino?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, Resolution 2021-6 has been passed, seven to nothing. The next item on the agenda that we have this evening is an executive session, uh, Elizabeth, would you like to...
You need, you need to do another reading. That was just the vote on the emergency.
Oh, that's right, that's my, my mistake.
Resolution...
Okay, we'll go to the second reading.
Resolution Number 2021-6, a resolution authorizing the fiscal officer to opt into a UAN feature as recommended by the auditor of the state of Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Okay, we'll now take a roll call vote to pass the legislation.
Bookmeyer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Sabatino?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, that's also, that, uh, Resolution 2021-6 has passed, and I'll thank the law director for reminding me, I kind of jumped the track there a little bit. Okay, again, the, uh, next item and last item on the agenda is executive session, uh, Elizabeth, uh, you wanna state what that executive session falls under?
We need to go into executive session under Ohio Revised Code, Section 121.22G3.
Okay, at this time, we'll, uh, do we need, need a motion to go to executive session? Someone like to make a motion to go to executive session?
I can make that motion to go to executive session.
Okay, Perry, has a motion, Beth's second?
This is Beth, I, Beth, I'll second it.
Do we need a vote?
Yes. Bookmeyer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Yes.
Basil?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Sabatino?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, all members of the, uh, council, uh, and party will hang up and call in on the executive session number. Uh, the residents that are listening in, they just continue to stay on the line if they wish, and, uh, we will return as soon as Into the, uh, uh, city council meeting, we have adjourned back from executive session into regular session, and out of the executive session, council has decided to not take any action tonight, it will be, uh, looked into further. And I'll ask, uh, City Law Director to contact Mr. Sheehan. Okay, uh, other than that, that concludes the, uh, agenda for this evening. Our next meeting will be Monday, April 5th, at 7:30 PM, and it will also be a teleconference. So, at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Come on, guys, just do a second, let's get out of here.
There's nobody down there.
What did you mute?
Okay, uh, at this point, we've, uh, adjourned from the executive session, and, uh, we will, uh, take no action this evening, and we are going to ask Attorney Elizabeth Glick to contact Mr. Sheehan in reference to this, uh, matter. Uh, at this time, we have nothing else on the agenda, so we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
This is Beth, I second it.
Okay, we have a second, and next motion by Perry and a second by Beth, motion, council, excuse me, council meeting is closed.